I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting to order at 7:00 PM on April the 15th, 2024. I would also like to acknowledge that we're on treaty five territory ancestral lands of Nick's way to creation and homeland to the making and that we're all treaty people. Thank you. I have an approval of the agenda. Counselor Fitzpatrick, Counselor Overall in favor. Terry, I'd like to mention that we have Counselor Oberdorfer on Zoom tonight. Counselor Valen, Deputy Mayor Valentin will maybe joining us shortly. Next, we're going to go, we have presentations and delegations tonight. We're lucky. We have two delegations here. Our first delegation is from Special Olympics. So we have all kinds of different athletes in the north and that. And I would just like to acknowledge that this team that we're going to mention come forward was our bowling athletes. Uh, pardon me. My son's in bowling, so I'm sorry. Uh, our athletes that went to Calgary for the Nationals. So we're going to call them up by name and come and with their coach, and she's going to explain a little bit about exactly what happened in Calgary. And if I call you, come and join me here at the front. So you've got Amy Chubb. Michael Harrison. Mervyn Linklater, just saw you come in, Mervyn. Corey Beery. Okay, so I think you want to explain maybe a little bit about.
Um, sure. So this is Michael Harrison. He is one of our snowshoe athletes. He won. Do you know, do you remember which races you won all your medals in?
One, one gray and that's a gold.
Yeah.
And then, then the 400 was.
A bronze.
On, yeah, this one here.
Yeah.
And then the 200 was a bronze.
He also wanted 200 and bronze. Amy Chubb, uh, she is also snowshoers. She won a gold in the four by 100 relay. Corey? I forgot, is one of our Alzheimer's skiers. Nope, past country skiers, sorry.
Okay, so he, um, he won, um, a gold in, um, let's see, 500 meters and a gold and a 1K. And, um, a silver in the 2.5 kilometers.
Marvin was one of our bowlers who went to Calgary.
He came in fourth.
He came in fourth overall.
And in, um, and singles. They came in bronze in the 1K. In post country. So. Corey? Corey, Corey's right here. Yeah, so I have it right on here. Corey got two gold, 500 meter and 1K and a silver in the two and a half. Thank you. And they have Thompson. They're very proud of you for doing that. Michael Harrison.
This is 100.
Okay.
Yeah.
Michael Harrison, right here. So you have a gold in relay and two bronze. Very proud of you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my God.
And you've got four.
Thank you.
And considering that Mervyn came through a car accident just very within not long before and still turns up to bowling. Comes in every week.
Every week, yeah. All the way from, where do you come all the way from? Where do you live? Where do you?
Leave traffic.
Leave traffic. Every Wednesday comes in for bowling. And Kenny, he got a bronze in the 500. Bronze, thank you. Amy. There you go. Amy got a gold in the relay. Well, thank you for all, thank you for all. And thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate it and good luck in the future and all your endeavors and special. Thank you. Thank you. That's pretty impressive for our city on the state. Thank you very much. The next delegation tonight is the Thompson Senior Resource, uh, Community Resource Council. Uh, read their annual conference and we have asked them to attend in person. So if you want to come up to the front, state your names. And go from there.
I've got her back.
She did say names plural. There's two chairs. So I'm Kenny Byer, coordinator for the Thompson Seniors Community Resource Council.
And I'm Ollie Stapleton, chairperson of the Thompson Senior Council.
So just a little bit of background, the organization started in 1996 when there were probably only two people in Thompson with gray hair. Uh, right up until about 2020, uh, they communicated regularly with a group of about 30 to 34 people. That's up till September of 2020. Since then, we have grown and now we communicate regularly with over 400 people. When you take a look at the statistics, there is more than 2,000 people in Thompson who are age 60 and older. And that number is growing continually. Uh, so as you, as your population changes and ages, as that demographic grows, there are greater needs and especially now with the rise in things like Alzheimer's, diabetes, and all of those other things which aren't necessarily age-related, but are more conspicuous as you age, all right? Um, there's more resources that are required to help people. That's what the key role that the Thompson Seniors Community Resource Council plays. Um, and to add to that, there's a new, uh, I don't know if movement is the right word. There's a new trend. It's called social prescribing. And it's where doctors and mental health workers and those uh, those professions realize that some of what they prescribe won't be covered off by medicines and it might be covered off by somebody saying, Kate, here's where you can take this person for recreation or to get together, especially if isolation is, is the problem. And we have been contacted to help people with their rent, help people find, uh, uh, mobility aids and all sorts of things. So anyways, um, the Association of Senior Support Coordinators um, hosts an annual conference where they bring in experts to help educate coordinators so that we can do a better job of servicing not just the seniors and elders in the community, but basically the larger community because we also have to help their caregivers. We also have to help their families to support them. So we, for the very first time in the organization's history, were asked to host their annual conference. And it's kind of a scary thing to be honest, because, um, last year was their first conference after COVID and it was my first conference ever attending. So to be organizing something like this is quite an honor. Um, so what's going to happen is we're going to be getting about 70 delegates, which might not be large to some of you people. To us, it's huge. And we'll be getting delegates from all over the province. We're going to have specialists in talking from the, um, uh, Alzheimer's Association, talking about uh, advances, what's happening in other parts of the province, what kind of supports there are, how to recognize, how to treat, and how to help caregivers. Same thing for diabetes. We'll be talking about other issues such as nutrition and mental well-being of seniors and what resources are available. We'll also be talking about what resources are not available and how, what can we do to access them. And these are all things that we're going to learn and we'll be able to apply to our community. So to us, we're helping seniors at large and some of our seniors, let's face it, leave Thompson and go to somewhere else, right? Uh, so we're going to be helping seniors at large. We're definitely going to be helping our seniors here by being better informed and probably make better choices about what kinds of programming we offer and, and what kinds of workshops and things that we can provide for people. Um, I forgot something. I can't remember what it is. Um, but, but so that's, that's the gist of it. Now, we do have a budget. We do, of course, have delegates, uh, money, but it's going to be pretty nip and tuck whether we can break even. All right. Uh, we do have a working budget and that's why we've approached the city and other people to do things such as sponsor a meal or sponsor another segment of a conference to help, to help us out. Um, right now I'm just open to questions.
Thank you. Does anyone want to start first? If not, I will. Uh, last week, I, at the Association of Municipal Municipality Meeting, I actually had one mayor that come up to me that said they'd be up here for this in the fall and a couple of counselors were talking to it. It actually had a friend from Gilbert Plains and a friend from Dawson that are already old and excited about renting uh, vans to come up and that sort. It's definitely, and the ones from Dawson and Gilbert Plains are former Thompsonites that are really looking forward to coming home. The ones from A and M are looking forward to coming to see in Thompson for the first time. And I think by having something like this here in Thompson, it maybe will, uh, encourage more seniors to stay in Thompson because now we are going to be able to provide better services and they will have support groups, which didn't happen in the past. So I definitely commend you for everything that you're doing here and I'll open it up to council if they have any more questions. Comments? Ask them on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't have pressure, but, uh, I don't, I don't think it belongs to senior because you can speak the whole entire presentation without paper and. I think it's going very well. But anyway, uh, I think we, we are looking to your, your requests and, uh, somehow I think eventually we will come up with a budget. But, uh, personally, I think I can, uh, I can do something or maybe I can come and see you personally level to, to, to do that kind of sponsorship, whatever. So it's on behalf of us.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I think I still got your phone number.
Thank you. And by being your county tonight, there's possible that other persons that want to come out and sponsor your organization, please feel free to get hold of Kenny or Molly or both of them and go from there. A Counselor Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. It was nice. Uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to this as well. I'm a senior myself now and uh, so my fellow councilor to my right, uh, I think this is a good thing for Thompson and I'm glad to see more seniors are here and I'm hoping you guys will have a really successful, uh, uh, event and hopefully we can, uh, we can support you in some way here.
Thank you very much. Counselor Sean.
Thank you, man. Thank you for your presentation. I saw a media news today. I don't know whether it's true or not. The government of Canada is going to add 2,385 dollars to all senior citizens. And when it happens, the police have a tape. Maybe you can check it out.
I will definitely check that out.
So for senior that's 60 and above, they're correcting CPP. That's what they wanted to add on.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so you can check it out. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor with time.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you for your presentation because they're having the same thing with me on a personal level, so I'll be talking with you.
Thank you. Counselor Over.
Thanks for the presentation. I have a lot to talk. I'm not allowed to talk. Uh, I joined, but I don't consider myself a senior. I'm only six. I'm six, yeah. So thanks for everything. We're doing a great job. Be welcome to do for you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to note also that the seniors council, uh, has been providing food halfers, uh, throughout the community, um, COVID and post-COVID doctors for, for people that are needing help. So thank you again for that. So and for the question.
Thank you. Uh, what is the date for your?
I'm sorry.
What was the date here?
September 18th, 19th, and 20th.
September?
Yeah, yeah. And just for our, if I may put a plug in at the trade show, our updated resource guide will be available. That's the one that has phone numbers for the seniors and elders might need for services. And we'll also have a, a new brochure ready to hand out so that, um, and we'll make some available for City Hall so that anybody who watches and they can have it one up to.
Thank you. All right. Anything else?
No.
Same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming. All the delegates, you may stay for the regular council meeting or you may sneak out. It's entirely up to you. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Bye, Dan. Next, we're going to go to community and feedback. Thank you. Final request. No one? Second time, community comments and feedback. If there's any questions, come, state your name. Third and final comment. Community comments and feedback. Thank you. Same thing. Winter reports. First report is our CFP.
Thanks for having me. Uh, for the month of March here, uh, the RCP attachment is continuing. We have, uh, 11 hard vacancies, uh, including our, uh, our staff, which can, uh, municipal employees. Um, so we have a hard vacancy at our operations on CO rank, the officer in charge rank and some very possible positions on the floor. Uh, I will add that we had two new members start this month. So there's, uh, two, uh, two new ones running around here and they're doing quite well. As far as the, uh, prime trend reporting for the report here, uh, and this time last year, we've actually seen a decrease of calls for service uh, where we have 3,931 calls, which is down from the 4,243 calls from the same time period last year. Um, for the most part here, uh, there's been an increase, mischief, there's been a decrease, breaking enters increases, assaults, assault is aggravated assault, slight increase here, sexual assault and sexual assault is called service. We've seen a decrease. Drug possession, drug trafficking, we've seen an increase here. Impairs, there's been a decrease, more vehicle collisions, there's been a significant decrease. Uh, public disorder, there's been an increase, but the whole, there's been a decrease. Uh, overall, our prison issue this year uh, as compared to last year, are 1148. Uh, so that's a slight increase from last year, which had 10,000 and 72. And then at the, uh, on page three, the prisoner origin information. For the most part, it is predominantly Thompson residents that were watching, but as you can see from, uh, throughout there, there's, uh, uh, still a decent amount of, uh, members that are lodged from outside of communities here. And our piece for community police relations uh, unit, uh, they participated in the Rob Nash Project here, uh, musician that, uh, told his story using, uh, suicide awareness story, uh, through music. Uh, so the members went there and were at, uh, all the shows, were all the schools, school lake, South Indian Lake, Wind Lake, Go for also attend for communities. Uh, they also participated in some mini winter fest, something winter schools, uh, showed some, uh, they use the drunk bus, their goggles to teach the students about all, all the drug impairment, which heard did very well. He participated in the Juniper and Burnwood School Breakfast Program and assisted with the cycling without age program, repair bicycles. And they also participated in John drinking and our science fair. All for you there.
Thank you. Any comments? Counselor Walker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your report. Uh, I have a question. Um, do you guys have any timeframe for the, for the, for the position to be refilled?
For which positions?
Like all the vacancy?
All the vacancies.
Except the, uh, the, the critical, uh, support. I know that's different. Kind of everywhere.
The, uh, the division is currently working through our, our resourcing issues. It's not just Thompson. There's some, some resource constraints here. Uh, I don't necessarily have a formal timeline for you, but, uh, those positions, uh, like operations and ceiling staffs are in a position that's been advertised a number of times for people to apply for. Uh, and it's just, um, it's just for getting somebody to apply or people to apply for their selection. Uh, the officer in charge, uh, position that I'm currently acting in, that one has to be posted here yet, I would say. Uh, and then the possible ones, we're, we're trying to fill them as best we can, but we're, we're likely going to be getting more, uh, uh, recruits here in, in the fall, I would say. Uh, so hopefully within the year, we're, we're, we're we're better off in our resourcing. But again, with new people coming in, we have that that door where people are transferring out after they've done their time here. So we're going to have some vacancies to a certain degree here, but, uh, where we're doing the best we can with what we have here, so.
Yeah, well, it's not a question, it's a comment. Like, the, the nice weather's coming soon, so I hope you guys can prepare for those, uh, rush and they're going to be an impact for sure, I believe. Uh, downtown is a, is a very concern to me. Especially, uh, you know, the, the same area we talked about a lot of times. So before I can see more, more, more petrol going through there occasionally. Uh, lately I've seen less because of, I believe this contribute to that factor. So hopefully you guys can come up a different plan to accommodate that kind of rush of crowd every if you look after that kind of issue that we always get concerned from citizen and then, you know, even when I go shopping, I always get stopped by to address those questions on my yelp. So anyway.
Yeah, we, we have, uh, mitigated our schedule here a little bit. So we're seeing more members on shift. Uh, so hopefully it'll help out with our, our downtown core here and our, our PCR and our members are well there. So uh, we'll, we'll be looking at strategies to help mitigate some of those factors aside.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Who would you?
Same thing. Thank you very much for your report. Appreciate it. Next, we're going to go to 6.2, community safety report.
Um, well, tonight with us we have Bob Dart. He is the new public safety manager for downstairs. We're taking care of um, by law, like being animal control and T C Jackson program. Um, so he's been here for six to eight, six weeks or so, eight weeks. Getting self familiar with, you know, with the department downstairs, so. Um, just, uh, speaking on the DSOs, we, uh, brought back a DSO that used to work here and left and he's come back. All CSOs are currently, uh, down south. Uh, they're doing level two training, um, for the, uh, the new, as per bill 34, the new, uh, act. Uh, so new, new task, I guess, new things that, uh, that CSOs can do. So they are back in town on the 19th. Um, it is the pilot programs, the first level two that they've done. Um, I did see the CSOs today and they're actually, they're, they're pretty excited about the training that they've received so far. And once the two of them are back, we will be able to put two, uh, of the CSOs back out on the, uh, around the streets patrolling. Um, because the second CSO will be able to get, um, I found it today, we've been, we've got recertified and it's just important. So pretty excited with that to have, uh, to the metro of our streets, uh, uh, next week. And then we're going to be working in here, hopefully this summer to do like controls, walks and walk down. Um, further on in the agenda, we will be discussing, uh, Bill 34 and the new authorities that the, uh, the CSO program has. Uh, regarding the taxi license inspection, um, we downloaded some, uh, one video I got for March, we are C and P. Um, a taxi owner that asked us to download this for an accident, um, that they had prepared to invoke. And then we moved for, uh, license inspector did for complaints that he moved to the community. Um, the position of the animal control slash bylaw officer, uh, was built and the person started today. Uh, so that individual will be making this us to really with the department over the next few weeks. And we will also be starting, um, hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll be starting to advertise for the complete program to, uh, to get that up and running. Uh, we're going to be doing a little bit earlier than we did last year. The snow started to melt a little faster, but, uh, um, we're hoping to get the advertisers to get this out, uh, around the streets starting. Our stats remain kind of consistent around control and bylaw. Um, we still have a lot of, uh, complaints that come in from, uh, the community under bylaw. We're still averaging around 30, uh, 30 calls a month. Still people still parking on the street on garbage day. We do promote it quite often. We're putting it on our social media. Um, but we still, they should have way to get tickets, uh, if there are eight, 20 last one, they keep this one. Those kind of consistent every month. Um, like I said, I'm hoping to continually advertise it. Um, and I think that's all for that department for this month.
Any questions, comments? Counselor Sean.
Thank you, Madam. Uh, my question is, we have all the uh, bylaw infraction. Do we collect any revenue from that?
Uh, ticket, are you talking about ticket that is an issue? Inflections, yeah. If there's tickets issued, yeah, you would, uh, collect the revenue, they would pay their ticket. Um, they have, they can go through the screening officer program if they want to contest their ticket. Um, but we do generate revenue. I, I would know what that revenue would be. That's something you can get from finer.
So what happened if the people don't pay?
If they don't pay, um, it would be sent to collection.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm very happy to see we have an animal control person on staff again. And so this is a reminder for all the animal parents out there. Please, uh, come in and get your animals licensed properly. Make sure they're up to date on their shots and please, uh, follow the protocol. Don't have them running at large. Thank you, Sonia. Thank you. Um, go on from there. Next, 6.3 Thompson Fire and Emergency Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. We'll, uh, we'll flip off for the main time on the agenda. We'll start off with the fire handling responses and then we'll get into the station report. So for the, uh, for fire responses for the month of March, uh, we had a 45, uh, 45, uh, fire responses with five general alarms. Here to date, we've had 131 fire responses, six general alarms over 2023 of 113. So it's an increase of 50.9%. Uh, the dollar value loss, uh, for, uh, the, uh, current month was 600,000. That's attributed to the two homes that I'll mention in the, uh, in my station report, uh, after, after this report. On the animal side, uh, for the month, we did 718 responses, 718 calls per year to date was 1,978. Uh, year to date for 2022, 2023 was actually 2022 with a decrease later of 2%. On the inspection side, uh, current month, uh, we had no inspections, again, nothing, uh, due to, uh, just being extremely busy and short-staffed downstairs. Fire inspections, uh, we're starting to notice, uh, that the community members are putting in requests for renewal inspections and new, uh, new inspections. I just, uh, you know, ask the public to just, uh, be somewhat patient as we're doing our best to get around to those, uh, to those inspections when, uh, when we have some, some downtime. Moving into the station report. So in the past month, City of Thompson has hired three fire paramedics, uh, within this last month. Current basis for Thompson Fire and Emergency Services is still at six positions. By full-time and a one-term position. Due to the increased calls for service for EMS, total availability time to date has been Due to the increased calls for service for A M S, total availability time to date has been short of three hundred hours. Over, uh, between January first and April first compared to the total unavailability time for twenty twenty-three being slightly over four hundred and five hours. As of April first, K F S completed nine hundred fifty-seven multiple trips compared to twenty twenty-three being nine fifty-five, so we're relatively on target as we were last year. March twenty-third, K F S responded to ninety-six, uh, Yale for a garage fire, general alarm was activated. Minutes after arrival, garage explosion occurred resulting in large portion of the outside ball felling against the attached garage of ninety-two Yale. Fire spread quickly through both homes, we developed in total loss. Mutual aid was activated with our mutual aid perk, our valet. And they housed their fire afterwards at the station as all the resources were tied up on scene in ninety-six Yale. One minor injury to the homeowner, taken to T G H for the assessment. Cause of the fire has been ruled as uninterrogative this time. March twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-four, we respond to, uh, uh, fifty-two Greenway for a kitchen fire. General alarm was activated, police block fire under control, it opened quickly. However, the homeowner was taken to hospital, second-degree burns to hands and smoking. And unfortunately, his family effects perished with fire. Cause was careless cooking, left on the tenant. April the second, uh, administration member was remiss, per, was representative of the training employment services to discuss department's employment, uh, shortage, and Mary yourself was there. Uh, we discussed the areas to potentially offset costs for the hires and, uh, I can say that meeting was, uh, was encouraging. Tended the, uh, National Association Fire Two Four Thirders meeting on, on Saturday, April sixth, that the fire commissioner Ryan Chen gave a presentation on the upcoming wildfire season. Here is a highest concern, basically with moderate severe drug conditions as of right now, north of Swan River, two brochet east of, uh, Grand Rapids to Norry House. And we expect above seasonal temperatures for the northern region over the next two months. Uh, which brings me to, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, April sixteenth, uh, wildfire protection meeting for natural resources to review our training wildfire protection. That's my report. If any questions.
Thank you, sir. Comments? Questions? How for one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the report. Uh, I, if you recall last meeting, I did ask for the question about the, uh, especially your ambulance response, uh, number. This, uh, last one, you have seven hundred eighteen call, right? So remember I asked, I say, would you be able to track how many calls is alcohol related? We say you, you can possibly do that. So would you be able to get it the next time after that? I know you have shot of staff, I get that, so is it possible?
We, we actually did start that request. Unfortunately, right now, because of the, of the, the way the calls are, are originated and determines are given through that, that patient center, that information became quite nasty very quickly, so we did start it, of course, and I can have
I appreciate that, uh, and then I, I go to the second, uh, question, when I look at your station report and you compare last year, uh, you, you have four hundred and five hours short because of lack of, uh, staff. So compared, this year you only have two hundred ninety-nine. To me, it looks like it, it is better, right? That means you're losing four days instead of so many, like, compared to last year. Is, is how you, how you, the report reflect?
No, that's incorrect, counsel. Wrong. The report right now is saying that total thus far for three months, we're hitting a target of three hundred hours, we've been in unavailability time for animals as for our community, which equates to, you know, by the, for, at least fifteen days. Uh, for the total year last year, we, we hit four hundred and five hours, so we continue on the trend uh, that we're currently on right now for the total year of twenty twenty-four, the projected is twelve.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I thought you asked to April and like, okay, so that means it's improving.
Oh, my.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I already wronged him. Uh, okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? What? How's it going?
Thank you, Madam. Uh, I don't know if this is for Steve or your bylaws. You're in the process of doing fire pit renewals? Uh, then I don't know if you guys can get around to do them. So for the people that you're just renewing, can they still use your fire pit before it's renewed? Because it was up in December. If nothing has changed.
Well, there's, we, we've, uh, we've seen rather than not, well, they'd be used simply because, um, there's things that we take in consideration in a fire pit. If you renew it like several years in a row.
Yeah.
And for example, if it's one of those fire-rated brick permits.
Right.
Uh, typically we see, uh, failure of the bricks below the level.
Right.
So we prefer not to use it until we actually have eyes on it. And, and simple with the, uh, the light gauge metal apartments that people purchase from
Right.
uh, different, uh, different, uh, locations in town or at it down. Uh, again, we, we failed them on the spot because they were probably engaged.
Okay, thank you. I never, I never thought it up again. Integrity is, is a help. It's required, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Coburn, did I see your handout?
Uh, I didn't know. I didn't have my hand. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, yeah, good reminder for fire pits to get them. Let's see, we haven't got any yet. Getting into barbecue season and that. And we'll also be, you know, watching over this summer if there happens to be fire bans or that, that will definitely affect all the fire pits in the house. Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no more comments, number seven, finance. A letter from Manitowoc Municipal Relations Assessment Services in regards to the two thousand twenty-five border revision. Anthony?
So this is from the district supervisor, or maybe just informing council that the date has been set for October seventh, twenty twenty-four, five P M, uh, for the border revision and that the appeal deadline is to be submitted to the department by September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. The city will be forwarding on the information that's requested and we'd be putting out our public notice as well. Um, I was not at A M M last week because I was pertaining other matters for the city, uh, but I was told that Lloyd Funk, uh, the chief assessor was there. You know, gave a presentation that was quite good and the department has offered to come to any community and make the same presentation to council. Um, so I think the recommendation that council's interested, uh, administration reach out and have them come and make a presentation, um, to the, to the council, because we anticipate next year, uh, this year, next year, to have a number of properties where the, uh, changes and the people coming forward to the board revision, uh, looking for appeals to council, to the board.
Thank you. Any comments? That, questions to that? Saying then we'll move on. Next, we're going to go number eight, Public Works. Eight point one is approval note from the Director of Public Works in regards to the tabulation of prices for granular material. Neil?
Hi, so, uh, on March nineteenth, we released a tender for the, uh, buy of granular material, uh, for the, for all the works that is a multi-year, uh, contract taken through, uh, till twenty twenty-seven. Uh, our existing contract had expired on March thirty-first, so this is, uh, kind of, uh, looking to renew or continue on. We received two bidders for this tender and, uh, you can see that they, they came pretty close to each other, one just beat the other one out by price. This, uh, the reported is actually our current supplier, there's, uh, really no, uh, no change in, in their delivery or anything like that, so the foreload is here for your review and, uh, oh, send it, they, they, the council.
Thank you very much. All right, do we need to move this on? Officer Walker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, it looks like some, uh, is that typo or is that the, because when you look at the approval note, under the overscore there, smoke construction but ninety-nine percent, but when you look at the price, you, you rate it fifty, specification thirty and delivery twenty, when you go to the dispatch, the price is forty-nine. But, but is, is it typo?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Because look like to me is a smoke, is better score.
Wow.
Right?
Yeah, you're right, right.
Anyways, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you for the catch. Happening?
So council's in agreement, we bring this forth for a resolution of the next meeting of council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I show hands, who's in agreement to bring it forward for a resolution? Karen?
Can I have a question?
Okay, Councilwoman Trump.
Uh, now, when I see the smoke contractor down there, the price is one million, maybe over. And the other one for the dispatch is nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, maybe over. But when you go to the bottom down there, okay, for two thousand twenty-four all the way to two thousand twenty-seven, your total amount cost is three hundred fifty-eight thousand. Why does so much difference in, in the, in the amount of money that I had before this?
Uh, so like the quantities that are put into the tender are based on, uh, just in case almost, that if we had an extreme amount of water breaks or uh, a lot of road repairs that we had to do, we want to make sure that we have enough material that would be available to us with, with, uh, with our budget to be able to wear, so we only pay for what we actually have in order, so the numbers below are based on what our actual consumption has been over average of the last, uh, two years.
And I have a second question. Uh, I know smoke have a caution, but did the batch have a caution too?
Uh, we met dispatches, there's a fire for the last few years and I've no, had, had no issue with them at all, so.
How do you get the material?
I have no idea how.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, the patch also has an area in the same gravel here.
Yeah.
As smokes does.
Okay.
That's a fine.
Good.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Neil?
I will make sure that, that, uh, number is, uh, proper.
Mayor? Quick note, did you, did you skip over finance?
Pardon?
Did you skip over when we said? Finance?
No.
No? It isn't nearly the way I would for revisions.
Yeah.
No, that was, uh, the number seven is the letter Anthony explained to us.
He did too.
Okay, so no more questions of Neil?
Yes, ma'am. What's your name?
Pardon?
What did you say, Madam Mayor? Did you say something?
Me?
Yeah.
I just, uh, early question if we missed number seven, and I said, no, Anthony had explained that better. Okay, next, thank you, Neil. Next, we're going to go on to recreation, nine point one. There's a memo from the Director of Recreation and Community Service in regards to request of waiving the fees, um, for U S W local six one six six.
Funny, um, so local hit one six six provided us a letter asking us to waive, um, fifty percent reduction uh, for the running term, it's these places equal to fifteen to the nineteen. Um, it's an annual event that these places, the tier fifty, um, city employees, Thompson Fire Emergency, Hydro, R C P and various other, um, organizations, they get together and, and, uh, for fun activities playing hockey. Uh, the total for the four-day event is two thousand eighty-eight dollars fifty-four cents. So if city, um, and council agree to give them a fifty percent reduction, it would be about two thousand, forty thousand, one hundred seventy. They do, uh, comply with the, you know, the.
Comments? Okay, I guess we would need to move, okay.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Senator. They do this every year. They've done this probably for the last fifteen, twenty years now, so is this, uh, do we usually give them a waived fees for the, for this tournament?
I'm guessing we'll find, I'm guessing we'll find anything. Um, I was told we have. Uh, but I wasn't able to find anything, so I was looking for previous that all, I think, compared to.
No, Anthony?
Yes, so if, uh, council's in agreement, we bring it for a resolution. If not, we would not.
It was an agreement, sorry, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor Valentino. Welcome, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, uh, thanks, Mayor Smoot. As long as it, as it falls within the guidelines for the, the, um, waiving of fees policy and guideline and brought forth, then I'm fine with supporting it since it follows the, the policy. Thanks.
Thank you. You know? Okay, I guess we'll ask the question, we wanted to move forward for a resolution to, uh, do the waiving of the fees. All, I show hands, all those who opposed? Karen? Move forward. Nine point three is, uh, memo from the director. Oh. Oops, I'm sorry, I missed nine point two. Nine point two is a memo from the Director of Recreation and Community Service in regards to the fine schedule amendments by limo rate adjustment. Sonia?
Uh, so back last year in August, uh, we provided a letter to all the tax saving industry, um, providing them the opportunity to have a limo, um, license, operator license in the community. We've had a limo license, um, it hasn't been used for probably the last ten years. Um, so having this now in the, in the community was, uh, a request of the, uh, industry to put it forth again. So we did do a lottery draw, similar to what we did for other jobs. Uh, we had, um, I think there was a foul been told that we had, the first two denied, they did not want to have it after they were drawn. Um, so the candidate that, uh, I think was the third one that we kind of went down through, uh, he wanted it. Um, but he wanted some changes made to the, um, to the reason lines to make it more enticing to people to want to be able to use a limo. Um, because you can't do pails and you can't do certain things and it's not, uh, they don't have a meter in their vehicles. Um, so it initially was seventy-five dollars for the first hour and then fifty-five, uh, as the minimum. So he'd like it changed to have a minimum booking of a half hour, get forty dollars and then forty dollars for every half hour, uh, starting at half hour.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Officer, please back.
Thank you. Thank you, Sonny. So he wants to, I, I see his, uh, logic behind wanting to have forty dollars for the first half an hour, but uh, I don't follow the, the, the other logic. If he, if he books it for an hour, someone books it for a half an hour, pays forty bucks, but if they go an hour or an hour and a half, does he check?
Forty dollars every, so it's charged in half hour increments, not in, let's just say if you have a
Forty dollars for the hour.
Yes.
Okay.
Officer McCobber?
Okay, Madam Mayor. But here it turns the minimum issue five.
That's people, that's from the old, okay, the old ten.
So the standard is one forty.
Yeah, so the red is what?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you. Yeah, I, like I said, sorry. Uh, yeah, I could see this being more enticing actually if you can book it by the half an hour. So, yeah, just sounds okay to me. I'm just supportive of that.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no more comments? Okay, the question, who's in favor of moving this on to Monday, uh, agenda to be approved? I show hands. Karen? Thank you. I just lost my, in here. Nine point three. There's a memo from the Director of Recreation and Community Services in regards to C S O authorities, bill thirty-four. Oh, yeah.
Um, so in twenty twenty-three, um, the Manitowoc Safety Center has built thirty-four research act amendment. So that expands the role of safety officers, um, giving them additional authorities than what they currently have. Um, our safety officers right now, uh, we really mainly deal with essential issues that we have in our community. So adding on these new authorities, um, it can provide them the opportunity to do different things in the community. Um, Bob and I have gone through, we have taken up some of the things that, uh, we're in, bill thirty-four, and Josh will provide you a copy of bill thirty-four. Um, there are other municipalities such as, um, Steinbach and Can, Canover, the R M O Canover. Um, they have their C S Os doing the restrictions at the, um, the waste. Um, so kind of mixing some things up for them, so they're not really just sold. I'm hoping that by having new restriction or new, um, duties, I guess, that they could do, it might entice, um, the C S, other people to apply to be a C S O, so you're not just dealing with um, the downtown, so we can kind of mix it up, so they can actually, they can go out, they can do traffic stop, they can, um, they have a little queue lift there, but they can do, uh, oversized weight vehicle, they have the opportunity to do mobile traffic or speed enforcement. Uh, they'd be able to stop vehicles that are not in compliance with the dangerous grid or truck route. Uh, if the C S Os know that somebody is smoking in a vehicle with a child under the age of sixteen, they can start them uh, and issue tickets, um, seat belts and a seat uh and issue tickets, um seat belts and a seat belts. If they're using their cellular device, they don't issue tickets for that. There would be a cost to the adoption to put the radar detectors and the equipment into the vehicle vehicles. Um, that's something that we're going to have to keep the R C P list and then uh get trained. We would also have to be trained on that. Um, the C S Os right now down for level two and back down. So they are getting trained on some of these things, how to issue tickets. They did do ride alongs with uh these agencies as well. Um, but there would be more uh training, in-house training, I guess, with kind of working with the R C P. Um. For them to be able to do that. Now, as council decides, we don't have to pick all. Uh, we do have a list. We just kind of went through and just put some of them down there. Um, we're also help to uh to fund the program as well. Um, there are others. We do not have to hit them all. If we do add um any authority or alternative C S O program, it would have to do an amendment to the agreement that we've fairly have with the problem. Which, yeah, is if that's what we want to do, um we can think of, we can add on now. If we want to add more later, we can go back and amend the agreement again to add on it later.
I'm through.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much. This uh question. So that means they have to uh get the uh different training to able to to do this kind of extra work, right? So does that mean there will be a longer period of time for training and the fee will be way higher? If it does, what is the difference?
I don't know what that fee would be. I was speaking earlier tonight about um sort of the uh the equipment, because we'd have to get that equipment uh to put into these small vehicles and to see what kind of training that it would require, because this is new. There are some municipalities already started it. So we would connect with them to see what steps that they have to take to to make it work in our communities.
Can I continue, Madam Mayor?
Uh huh.
Like, when I listen carefully what you say, you say this is the one that you picked to do this more. What are what else that they can choose to do? Let's say to see uh you, that is a big list?
Yeah, there is a big list. I do have it that we can provide you uh to show you what we what they can do. Uh, we just we just chose these ones just because there's other municipalities that do them already. So it might be easier for us to transition it to do it then because they've already have them going and up and running in their communities. Um. But there is a there is other things that they do.
If you don't mind, because I I think some something is practical, some maybe is not practical, yeah. My own opinion. So I like to go to that kind of thing too. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Smoak. Um, yeah, I have a few comments about this. So this, the amendments to bill thirty four aren't necessarily to entice people to want to become a C S O is this is across the province to make our communities and our municipalities more safer by making amendments to bill thirty four. The C S O program in a lot of municipalities across the province is used a lot for traffic enforcement and for bylaw and for ticket enforcement. Whereas we at the City of Thompson use it more to help with our social issues. So, I mean, bill thirty four is available to any of us. You can Google it. I don't necessarily think we need to have it sent if you haven't already reviewed it as a counselor. So these amendments are just some new ones that the province has put in after hearing the need from communities that are looking at having a community safety officer program. These amendments help for all municipalities to be able to um have this program and kind of tailor it to fit what the needs are for your community. So um I think, yeah, maybe it entices people to become them, but actually, the amendments will help us to have safer safer communities by allowing them to have more authority to uh enforce some of some of the things that have been um put out. So I think it's good. I think it's the movement for from the minister's office in the right direction. I would like to see the next part of this to be the training now for municipalities that have C S O programs. The next push should be for the minister's office to be able to uh have training maybe on a mild basis throughout the province, throughout regions. But they need to now have the training to go coincide with how they're trying to increase the amount of C S Os. And they've done that by trying to make amendments to bill thirty four. So um I think it's good, and I think that we should embrace the uh changes to the amendment and make lobbying for the training to be uh advocacy that we do now as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. House of Congress?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. By looking at this, the what the C S O can do on this bill thirty four is start to worry me. The reason is some of the jobs here are very dangerous to the C S O carry guns. What kind of training the C S O have compared to the R C M P? I'm sure R C M P will think about three, four years for the training to get all this like like involved with drugs and the all the enfor- enforcement. I think we should sit down and discuss about this before we even try to bring it up to us.
Thank you. House of Congress?
Nice. Thank you, Senator. Uh, well, I I need some information here. So let's talk about traffic. You're going to put radars in that in the cars? For the the draw of traffic? Did you say that?
You wouldn't, you can have radars.
Right? Now, when when they're going to be used, is that only on request from the Arizona P? Or can the C S O can go out and get to speed?
Anthony, do you want to take that?
Yeah, so um my discussion of the problems are they're making these changes. Um, basically, it's going to be automatic to every community is going to have this option and then the council can decide. So if this council decides that you do want to have traffic enforcement, I believe um Saint Rose and a few others do that. They said it's generated quite a bit of revenue. Um, council will purchase that equipment, maybe in one or multiple vehicles. That vehicle could then do traffic. But back to Council Chung's uh reasoning, there are inherent risks with traffic that can make some of the stops very dangerous. So that's a balancing act that council have to discuss. Uh, because like the counselor said, um C S Os don't have the same Batman belt that a police officer would have. So um that's something that council will have to discuss. Just note to council that the R C M P's report right now is that the traffic constable is currently vacant. Um, if council starts having C S Os do a portion of traffic that frees up a members, these may be part-time to do other duties. So there's a number of things that council might want to do. But I think as the department's also saying, there's a number of other powers that we should probably have a look at. Uh, because um one of the things that we're hearing is C S Os are looking for variety in the work that they're doing. Uh, for some that take a C S O job, it's a testing ground to see if they want to become a police officer. Um, so it's a bit of a training. Um, so that one of the things that we've heard from other communities is when they give more variety in the duties, that the C S O stays longer um in that role versus moving on, to be able to break up the day.
And and we do take, we can, we have the ability as a council and a community to tailor what we want the C S Os to do. You know, as we move on. Uh, Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Smoak. Um, good discussion on this this uh agenda item. It's also important to remember that our C S O program is there to also support our R C M P. Especially with the the lack of the or the vacancies that we heard in the report tonight. The whole idea is a C S O program is also a lot cheaper for a municipality to have enforcements from them than it is um to task our R C M P with, especially with the amount of calls and how busy they are with the vacancies. So, yeah, no, good discussion. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? House of Congress?
So if we do this to our C S O, what happens to our R C M P traffic officer?
Yeah, council normally meets annually with the head of the R C M P and would discuss priorities. So that would be council's discretion. If council does decide that they want to do this, this would not be happening anytime soon. Because it's still happen to be getting the equipment, a lot of the training. So I don't anticipate there would be a change in how R C M P doing their staffing um in consultation with council. But if this is something that council want to do in a future year, it might be a year up before we're actually in position to do that. And as was said, it'd be limited in what they could actually do. There's only certain powers under traffic that allow. Other things, if it looked like it was a criminal matter, it's still required R C M P also.
So a quick question like this. So if we are C S O that are doing traffic on the highway, so many speed. Then there's a bigger violation now once they are full roll.
R C M P would be engaged at that point.
Be engaged.
Public safety radio. If it's something that's beyond their sphere of other powers. If it's within their powers, they could issue their own tickets, et cetera. And depending where the ticket's issued, if it's within the municipal boundary, that fine revenue after provincial courts and the deductions the courts made would come to the city. Um. Yeah, that's my understanding.
There's a big front column. That money won't recover to raise as their staff will get in this year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Uh, definitely, we've been advocating for the training to move around the province or to have a training program in the north because wherever you train in that area, the people who are out can stay in that area. So that's something that we've been pushing on. Thank you very much for that report.
Excuse me, mayor. I meant that that's the Sunday question.
Sure.
Not related to this. Um. We get a lot of the people inquiring about our uh playroom at the T R C C again. People are sending emails or something on the streets and asking, is there any plan to move forward to reuse this room or what's the holdup for it?
Um, I have a meeting with uh the Lyle this night or this week. We're going to be discussing a different plan. Uh, that is council's direction to remove the play structure. So that's open to the vote with uh a really nice comment. We'll have the play structure removed and we'll be turning that into um hopefully a year year round um game. And then we're going to be hopefully making a section on the outside of the play structure room, kind of on the stairs, but only about five feet. We'll be putting a fence around it and have airport-like toys over there for the other children.
Yeah, okay.
And I have a I have a grant for that, so the.
Thank you. There's a lot of people still wanting to use the play structure, people with smaller children and whatnot, because there's nothing for for them to do with their kids. And there was a few people there yesterday and they were really upset that they couldn't use it. They were told the reason they couldn't use it is because of the ability to clean it.
My understanding, it's not not my staff that clean it, but my understanding is that the requirements to clean um that actual that site or that unit, um we don't have a staff to be able to do it, to be getting up into the unit to clean it. And that's why I think we kind of got to where we are right now because of the issues that were in that play structure room a couple of years ago. So I sound, isn't it?
Yeah.
And this was a council discussion of the last council when it was called.
Right.
So I would agree that we would have to bring it back for the discussion of council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Sonia. Next, we're going to go into legislators. Ten point one is a memo from the City Manager in regards to provincial budget highlights twenty twenty four. Anthony?
Yes, the government tabled their budget on April second, presented by Minister Salah, the Minister of Finance. Uh, a number of uh a number of information was sent out to council. There's a few highlights that mentioned Thompson or have been linked to the lobby efforts that we've had for the last few years. Um, so there is an announcement of sixty point one million in ongoing funding for emergency ground transport, including it says a twenty-four seven ambulance in Thompson and paramedics to support it. Uh, we don't have any further details on what that means, but shared help will be visiting the community at the beginning of May. Uh, so hoping to hear there's additional funding and staffing resources that uh will be coming when they come to make their visit. Um, they announced a increase to the nursing pool pool, which is heavily used in Thompson. They reconfirmed that they'll be uh installing a permanent M R I at the Thompson General Hospital as well as a uh remote one that's in a truck that will be traveling to northern Manitoba until the permanent one is installed at the Thompson General Hospital. Um, there's an announcement of additional funding for helicopter medevac services in the north, um which links up with some work that council's been doing with um the Thompson General Hospital Hospital and the medevac providers. There will be funding for birthing services in the north, which has been in some of the lobby efforts. There's funding for the sobering center that's coming on top of the money that's already been provided. So it looks like two hundred fifty thousand dollars annually for uh operations. Um. Veterinary services in the north, which has been an issue in the community. There's been a two percent increase to the funding, the base uh capital funding for the community, um which isn't what quite what A M M and our lobby efforts have asked for, but it is an increase over the fees that we have asked. Um, they also noted that they will be providing additional funding for Thompson's uh building a new pool. Um, money for the urban uh and hometown green teams. Um, funding for youth services, funding for a safe space in Thompson, uh twenty-four seven safe space. We don't have any further details on what that is yet. Um, they're going to pilot two rest stops on provincial till highway six between Gypsonville and Thompson, uh waiting for details on that. And there'll be additional funding to A T V Manitoba and Snowman, uh which has been a council lobby effort in the past. Um, so the recommendation for the administration is with the information that's been sent out to have a review, um then we can convene a meeting to talk about lobby efforts moving forward with the new government to see where we want to target for additional funding or resources in the future.
Thank you. Any comment? Hey?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Do they have the timeline for the M R I? From the M R I?
We haven't been given any given any timeline, but we're going to be uh having meetings, I believe, with the head of the N R H A. Um, and hopefully they'll be able to provide a timeline. Though diagnostic services now we've learned are actually under shared health. So the N R H A might not actually be in charge of delivering it. It might be shared help delivered. So uh like we said, we have shared help coming in a few weeks. It's a question we can ask them, um because I believe the C E O might be coming with them on that certain use. So something we could ask her uh when she's in attendance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? House of Congress?
With the nursing, thank you, with the nursing pool pools in the north, all around north, there are different communities. I got that problem with my doctor. I keep getting being pulled off because you're going in town to other things. So that's not really improving our medical care here in Thompson. Right now?
Yeah, I I would feel the comment on that. I'm just delivering what uh the province has delivered for their budget, but if uh it's a lobby effort that council wants to make, we could have a discussion in that meeting and add it to the lobby.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smoak. Yeah, so for for overall, I mean, the north and the city of Thompson was mentioned a lot in the budget, which is always a good thing. I mean, there are good things in the budget. I'm disappointed in that there is lack of public safety that's been addressed in in the budget, and I think that that has to be a key lobby effort for the city of Thompson. And in terms of uh the R C M P vacancies, the R C M P costs that we incur, uh the surrounding regions on the helping to cover some of our R C M P costs. So I believe that public safety was missing in the budget. So when we do have a a meeting to discuss our lobby efforts as a council, I would like to see that uh we mention that also. But other than that, I certainly did appreciate all the times the Thompson was mentioned. And talk about healthcare, I do think as a region in the north, uh there was some gaps in the budget. Uh, it's disappointing to the town of the paw that they desperately need a clinic and it was a capital project that they're ready to dig and it's kind of fallen off the books. So I think when we talk about lobby efforts in our meeting, when we do that, we also need to talk maybe about lobby efforts as a region that we can support each other and also. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dave, thank you for that report, and there definitely was some good thing. And some of it begs to for us just to go and get more information and to see where the money is going. Ten point two is a letter from Minister Municipal Northern Relations regarding additional Thompson Regional Aquatic Center Fund. Anthony?
So the city of Thompson, uh addressed to the mayor, is in receipt of a letter from the Minister of Municipal and Rural Relations. Um, what is in the letter is a contribution of another five million dollars towards the Thompson Regional Aquatic Center project. Um. This is part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and there's also a commitment to work with the city on uh closing the gap on the remaining balance of fifteen million to make the project complete. Um, so tho- those funds and the paperwork are in process. Um, there will be a resolution coming forward, I believe, at the next meeting to deal with the pool and this money. And we anticipate that this five million dollars will be in our accounts probably by May of this year. So it's a positive story. Uh, it's a lot of lobby effort on behalf of uh city council to get this. Um, we have meetings uh that were hopefully brokered by our M L A and through the mayor. We met with the premier, the minister of finance, the minister of infrastructure, and the minister of municipal relations. We met with the premier, the minister of finance, the minister of infrastructure, and the minister of municipal relations altogether. This is over a period of two months to get to this. And as you noted, the agreement had to be sent back by March twenty-seventh, that's why it was then announced in the budget on April second.
Thank you. Anyone comment? Oh, Deputy Mayor, Brown, again?
Thank you, Mayor Smoak, well, I'm not going to miss a chance to, to put my two cents in on this letter, this is the best news that we've had in a, in a few years lobbying to get this aquatic facility the help we need to cross the finish line, so this is like the best news ever. That was the hardest secret to keep when we reviewed this as a council till the time the budget went out till tonight, when this was available for the public to see the actual letter, so thank you to the minister and to the premier who listened to us and to the, to the work that our city manager and his team did. There was many, many meetings, and we were so very well prepared when we walked into them, and I think that this is the, the proof is in the pudding when you get a letter like this, that we certainly, our efforts have paid off. And a huge thank you to everyone for being patient to get to the, the reading of this, and I know the committee worked hard this past weekend to have a fundraising event, it's been very difficult to fundraise for a project of this size without knowing there's going to be a commitment, so now that we have the commitment, I certainly look forward to shovels in the ground, and it is my understanding that the province will be attending the sod turning in the next month. So thanks again to everybody.
Yeah, and thank you to everybody that's been involved all the way through, it's definitely exciting news, and it was hard to keep a secret when we got this at first, so with that being shared, you will be having a special meeting and then we'll be moving forward, so. How's your walk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a quick question to answer, the section ten there about the insurance, I think normally we do have insurance anyway, right? If they do request a special, specific for this issue, what would it cost for extra?
My admission along terms required, because this is already required in our I C F funding and our other grants that we've already accepted, it's all the same. It's, yeah, this is like a boilerplate, this is blanket language that they use and everything, so we're already covered for this, okay? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Ten point three is an email from Brandon Neighborhood Renewal Corporation in regards to tolls for participation for communities outside of Winnipeg to sit on the Indigenous Advisory Board for homelessness in Manitoba. Anthony?
Yeah, this is just a general call from the Brandon Neighborhood Renewal Corporation, they also administer some of the funding from reaching home. So where's Thompson administers, the Thompson cab, they administer the indigenous cab as well as the northern and remote cab for reaching home from Ottawa. So this is just a call for board members, if anyone wants to apply, you can put forth your information, it's not really but it's open to the general public as well as any members of council who might want to put their names forward if you want to join this this advisory board.
Thank you, comments? All right. That being it today, just in the next couple of days, we hear we're getting a fair bit of snow, so please be careful out there, drive accordingly, please stay off the river and that, yes, Anthony?
Yeah, just to note, Mayor, that there's a special meeting at council call for Wednesday night. It's to review the tender documents for the pool project as well as Stanex contract on the pool project, as well as provincial funding. That'll be at seven P M on Wednesday night in council chambers.
So Wednesday, April seventeenth, council chambers, there's a special meeting. Please feel free to attend. Thank you, got call for a journey? How's your cover? How's your cover, all of them? For great week, everybody.